All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's special meeting of Sunnyside City Council. For the record, all members of council here and all indicated staff on the agenda are present and accounted for. Uh, before we start in our active agenda, um, we had a, I think by anybody's standards, a tragic event happened over the course of the weekend and Ms. Frausto contacted me and I'm gonna give her a couple of minutes to speak and then we are going to commemorate those lives lost by a moment of silence. So Ms. Frausto, you go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, over the weekend, our community was impacted by tragic news. Our community lost two young boys to inhumane, inhumane acts of violence. Isaac and Maurice, were community members, had so much life ahead of them, so much worth. Our hearts, prayers, and especially commitment to creating a safer town goes out to the families, to their friends, to their teachers. I ask the public and my fellow council members to join me in a moment of silence to honor their lives. Thank you. And just for some information, um, tomorrow there will be a community vigil over at the gazebo, starting at six o'clock. So if the community would like to join, the family gave their okay uh, to this happening. Um, and if y'all would like to join the gathering in support of the family, uh, tomorrow, we will be gathering at the gazebo again from six to about seven thirty. Thank you.
Right, thank you. All right, active agenda. Counsel, if there's no objection, um, got a request from Counselor Hart and I think that I, I tend to agree with her that we move the executive session to the beginning of the agenda. Is there any objection to moving that up to the beginning? I've seen no objection, so we'll start out with the executive session this evening. And I apologize, audience members, that just means that you need to stand up and walk back out the door. Um, the executive session goes as follows, to review information for legal matters involving legislative issues to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency, matters relating to agency enforcement, actions, or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency, litigation or potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency, and that is RCW four-two dot three-zero dot one-one-zero, parentheses, I, A, I. Thank you. Should be about thirty minutes. No action is expected, correct? Stop the recording. Um, Jackie, moving forward, the, uh, the Prothman Company. Um, we've got them to look at, but we've also have to talk about, yeah, an interim city manager in between times. We have a couple of different options that the city has done historically. Um, when I first came on a council in two thousand thirteen, we had an interim city manager that was provided by a company like Prothman. It wasn't Prothman, but it was, um, an interim city manager that they had provided. He was retired and was filling in for a, a short period of time until the permanent manager could be elected, or chosen, I'm sorry. Um, another option that we in the city have done is we have taken advantage of a staff member who is qualified and allowed that individual to step up as interim. In either case, should the interim be interested and council be interested, that interim can be hired full-time. Um, but it's not necessary. It's, uh, it's an option. So, my concern, and this is just me personally, my concern is that we have a manager step into the role both as interim or as permanent, who is highly qualified. Um, Sunnyside is a, what we would call a major corporation. We've got what, a hundred and fifty or so employees and we've got a pretty high budget, almost fifty million. Um, we want somebody who's qualified and competent to, to step into that role. And so, what I've taken the liberty of doing is I've asked the clerk and HR to do a little bit of work and give you guys some information. You got the emails. I think between the two of them, they can explain some of that, give us an opportunity to ask them some questions. So, um, Mr. Acting Manager, would you like me to just pass it over to the clerk or?
Yes.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, have you got anything you'll share with us this evening?
So Lucia, in the past, it was the city clerk that puts, um, the recruitment together with the agency, um, that just helps. So, but Lucia has gathered all of, um, some more information for you as it's appropriate for her.
All right, Lucia.
Good evening. Uh, so I have reached out to, uh, five companies since we last met last week. Um, I've received two quotes for, two quotes from them. One has, uh, let us know that they are not taking on additional recruitments at this time and we're still waiting on two. So, the first, um, proposal we've received was from GMP Consultants, and just to give you, GMP Consultants, and just to give you a little background, they are currently working with the city of Yakima on their interim city manager and the recruitment, uh, for, to fill their, uh, position of city manager. So, their proposal for interim city manager, um, uh, comes with the total cost of twenty-one thousand two hundred monthly. And that is to pay the interim city manager as well as pay GMP their portion. Um, also, this interim city manager that they've, um, suggested is someone out of the Spokane area. And so, since this person would be coming out of, uh, another location, the city would be responsible for obtaining and paying for temporary housing for this individual. Uh, when we looked at a rough estimate for a local hotel for a month, it's about forty-four hundred dollars. So, um, forty-four hundred for the temporary housing and about sixteen thousand eight hundred for the monthly cost of a, of this interim, takes us to the twenty-one thousand two hundred total monthly cost. Uh, their proposal for recruitment services, it is a twelve-week, uh, recruitment. Um, and that's twelve weeks from the process, uh, after kickoff, meaning after they meet with, uh, city councils to get their um, requirements of the position and what, what you all are looking for, then the person to fill this position. Um, so it's twelve-week process from kickoff to final interviews. Uh, the total cost for those twelve weeks is eighteen thousand five hundred for GMP. We also had another proposal from the Harrison Group. They are out of Yakima. They are fairly new. They were just started this year, twenty-twenty-four. Um, they proposed a recruitment phase of forty-five days. Um, they will work alongside the city to develop the recruitment profile, which will take a few weeks. Um, the preliminary interviews are conducted by that firm and the final candidates will then be presented to council. Um, this, uh, proposal was a total cost of eighteen thousand dollars.
Counsel, questions for Lucia?
The eighteen K monthly?
That is just the total cost. The eighteen thousand is the total recruitment cost, so it's not monthly. The total cost of the recruitment. So, and for both of them, even if we go through the recruitment and we go to final candidates and there is not someone that we feel is the best fit for the position, we would still incur that recruitment cost from each of them.
Further questions or comments?
No.
Ms. Hart?
Yeah, so just trying to figure out a total, uh, for, to, to hire a temporary interim city manager. We'd be looking at, did you say twenty?
Twenty-one thousand two hundred a month.
Okay. Um, and that includes housing? And?
That would include the temporary housing and the, um, hourly rate that would be paid to the, the way it works for GMP is we pay the, the interims, um, hourly rate directly to GMP and they pay the interim. So, we pay the hundred and five dollars per hour. Sixty-five of that goes to the interim and then the remaining portion, um, goes to GMP for, that's their cost of services.
And that's all part of the twenty-one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So then, if I could, then the, uh, seeking, uh, candidates then for, during this forty-five day, um, rec- recruitment?
With GMP, it's twelve weeks.
Oh, twelve weeks, okay. Um, that's the other one is the?
Yes.
Okay. So, that one is, is about eighteen, eighteen thousand five hundred? Is that per candidate? Or is that just for the initial search?
That's the initial search. That's the twelve-week search. So that includes kickoff meeting to final interviews.
Right, okay.
So that is their?
So then, so then eighteen is the, for the forty-five days? Recruitment?
Twelve weeks, yes.
Well, there's two, you said.
Yes, the first one for eighteen thousand five hundred, that's for twelve weeks for GMP.
Yeah.
And then the eighteen thousand dollars for Harrison Group, that's for forty-five days.
Forty-five?
Forty-five day recruitment, yes.
I was just trying to keep?
No, it's, it's?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments? So I haven't heard much of the Harrison Group. Have they been around for long?
They have not. They were actually just started this year and it was started by, um, and you can, anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, the former city manager of, of the city of Yakima, Mr. Harrison, um, that was recently like, oh, he, that's his, this is his firm, that he just?
So he has no track record or anything that he can show us yet, and who he's working with currently?
Correct.
Okay. So that's the information that we have so far. One of the things we need to discuss is, do we go with the interim that a company like this would provide, or do we wish to go with somebody internal and um, have somebody who knows our systems, knows our people, um, knows the history of how things have been working and is able to continue to implement existing programs, or do we wish to go a different route? Go ahead, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Do we have any volunteers from?
Well, we don't have any volunteers, but we do have someone who is willing for a price. Um, nobody rushed forward. I, I talked quite a bit with staff this past week, as you may imagine. Um, so I talked to Chief Layman. He is willing to step up for a period of time. Um, I, as a staff member, I think he's probably the most qualified, having experience as a council member in Moxie, um, knowing how to run a department, and he's done an excellent job with the police department. We know he's got some excellent organizational skills. Um, his public relations skills are very good as well. So, as a staff member, he's the one that I personally would recommend, the highest. Um, others who I've spoken with are very adamant and know they do not want that position. So, Ms. Frausto?
For how long?
Well, and that would be the question that we need to decide. Now, we have, uh, recruiting companies that are saying forty-five days to twelve weeks, depending on who we speak with. Um, you know, I'm thinking that he would want to have a closed, or limited amount of time. He does not want this to be an open-ended, just kind of in an interim position forever. Mr. Riley?
Real quickly, uh, when this has happened, uh, recently with a couple of other areas, the recruitment places that were brought in took typically between three to six months to find a new city manager going forward. So, I'd recommend for, for continuity, for wherever you have a point going forward, probably should have a revisiting period within two or three months to come back. And they can always extend that as necessary going forward.
Right. I would agree. Did I see a hand up? Did not, okay. So, any comments or ideas on that? Feel free to take my comments and toss them, turn them around, turn them inside out, do whatever needs to be done in order to make a, a workable solution here, folks. Mr. Deputy Mayor? Ms. Hart?
Well, I, I tend to, I, I understand your, your reasoning for, uh, putting forth, um, uh, Chief Layman's name as a possibility of an interim. It makes sense to me that we would do something like that if, as we're gonna go forward, um, to have somebody internal to be able to step up and already knows that what we are doing as a community, already knows, um, where all these skeletons are buried and maybe some we don't know about, um, don't like skeletons. Um, but I do think that if that were the interim situation, it might make better sense to, to, especially under the circumstances. I just kind of feel like that might be the right fit.
Okay, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Um, you know, of course, Mr. Lay, you know, Mr. Layman, you would be a perfect match for that interim. Um, how would that work with the, with the PD being low on officers right now?
Mr. Layman, you want to comment on that?
So I don't go out and patrol as it is. Um, but I manage fifty-eight employees at the police department. So, we have a commander and we have a second commander spot that just closed on the Friday. They were getting ready to fill those, uh, positions, would have to step up immensely. I mean, I, I would imagine for this period of time, I'd probably be working six days a week. So, I'd probably spend a couple of days a week at the PD. So, I, I, and I, I just want to make it clear, I am in zero way interested in permanently doing this. I just helping out to get by, so.
Okay, further comments or questions?
I totally appreciate you stepping up.
Yeah.
I, uh, I like the idea of him being the interim. Does know the system.
And, uh, Mr. Sanchez has made it very clear that for the week in which former city manager had asked him to step up, he was willing to do that, but it, it doesn't seem at this point he has any real desire to, uh, to fill in that role long-term. Um, when we sat down and talked that Tuesday last week, um, he had an awful lot on his plate that he was looking at, trying to figure out how to put everything together. So, I don't want to dump a load that heavy on somebody without notice until he feels completely ready. So, this is a big job. It's a real big job. And so, I feel it's important to have somebody who's got some familiarity with what we have in place and how things work and have been working. And staff feels comfortable with him as well. So, he's got a good relationship with staff. So, um, go ahead, Ms. Hart.
Yes, I just have a question. And do we need to, we don't need to decide tonight which of these two companies we would like to, to go with for our recruitment?
We do not, and there is a possibility that, um, Lucia is gonna get response from the other companies, which she's reached out to as well. So, we may have new information on this coming Monday. Uh, we don't have to make a decision on a recruitment company tonight. What I would like us to make some movement on is an interim. Because we need to get some permanents there so that we can continue to move forward. Um, yeah, technically, we, we were in kind of a gray area as far as signing some things and doing some things. We had to get that figured out over the course of last week as well. So, we do need to make some progress on that tonight in order to be able to do everything that needs to be done. So, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Can we vote on it?
We can.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
If somebody can make the motion on that, if you wish to, and we can go through that as well. That would be the best way to go.
I move to appoint Chief Layman as interim city manager.
A second.
Okay, I'm taking notes here, so. All right, we've got a motion by Deputy Mayor Delvan and second by Counselor Frausto to appoint, um, Police Chief Layman as interim city manager. Debate on this item.
Just to?
Ms. Hart?
Unless somebody else has a question, they've been talking, going?
Go ahead, go ahead.
The agenda says city manager recruitment discussion. That's it. Is there anything else we have to do?
Very good question. I may be getting ahead of myself. Um, I can do that rather easily. I'll give Mr. Riley an opportunity here to finish his conversation. We'll make sure we're doing it right. Thank you, Mr. Peter, for pointing that out. So, Mr. Riley, on our agenda, it says we're gonna have a city manager recruitment discussion and now we have a motion on the floor. Is that still permissible under this discussion?
It is, at this point. Do need to, at some point, to engage in contact negotiations.
That's correct. You're well?
Yeah, there's a question I was gonna ask if, if, um, and he had said that he didn't want to take it on long-term, but it, there was a three, six, three to six-month number that was thrown out here is a possibility of, um, how long the, it might take to find a new city, city manager?
And you can always shorten that time, too.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor. Um, Mr. Deputy Mayor, would you want to amend your, um, motion in order to put a specified length of time on this one that can be renewable?
Yeah, we could, uh, say three months.
Ms. Frausto, would you be willing to amend your second in order to accommodate that?
Of course.
Okay. So now then we have, and what's, when you say three months, mister?
Yeah.
Okay. So I will. Three, three months. All right, so we have an amended motion on the floor. It, uh, motion by Deputy Mayor, second by Counselor Frausto to appoint Police Chief Layman as our city manager for a period of three months that can be renewed. Okay, is there debate on that item?
I'm, I'm just, maybe, rules, proper rules here. Um, the amendment needs to be, I know they, they said yes, but do we need to vote on the amendment before we vote on the whole, the whole? Or do we scratch that one?
As long as you've amended your, your, your motion.
Okay, I just wanted?
We're fine, okay.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that, because there are those here who are, are keeping track of how I do this and it's made me more nervous than I normally am. So.
Yeah, we're just trying to do it right.
So, okay, so you have a motion on the floor, further debate on this item? Okay, all in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I too vote aye, motion carries. Thank you, Chief Layman, for that. We will, now, we're gonna have, this is not gonna come free, council. I, I, we need to understand that. Mr. Layman needs to be properly compensated for the extra amount of time that he's gonna be spending. And he'll be spending time here at the city. He'll be spending time away from his family. And a lot of responsibility will be added to his shoulders. And, um, Ms. Horner, I'm sure you've got some information for us on that.
Uh, I was just gonna say, we can try and put an interim contract together, um, for Monday's council meeting to bring to you guys. Um, we'll speak with, uh, Mr., or with Chief Layman to come up with, um, a proposal for you. That would be great, thank you.
And that would be the understanding that his contract would begin after Monday's meeting. So, Mr. Sanchez will remain as, uh, acting manager for the rest of this week and until Monday's meeting, and then we will turn it over to Chief Layman. Are you all right with that, sir?
I'm good.
Okay.
Dang it, another.
I was confident you'd say that because you kind of indicated that to me through a couple of meetings that we've had over the weeks, so. All right, so we've got a interim in place, starting on Tuesday. Um, is council okay with a recruitment agency in getting more information from recruitment agencies, or are there other ideas out there? I know we've used recruitment agencies with a great deal of success in the past. Um, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Um, Ms. Horner, I know you said you were waiting on two agencies, two, or?
Lucia.
Lucia.
I'm waiting on two more responses, yes. There was a total of five agencies that I reached out to. We have two responses. We're waiting on two, and one agency is not taking any additional recruitments at this time.
Is there a way we could wait another week or so?
We can. We don't have to select from these two. What I was concerned about is that, are we gonna use any agency? Is that council's desire to use an agency, um, or are we do, did somebody come up with a different idea that might work as well?
I think an agency is great.
Okay.
The other option would be somebody to step up and wanna apply for the position?
Well, we've had that in the past. Um, we've had members of the community who have stepped up. I can think of one person in particular. This was when my, when I was first on council for six months. Um, had suggested that, that they might want to step up for the job and then looking at the qualifications and looking at their qualifications, they didn't match. And I think I have heard of individuals, uh, whether council members or, or community members, trying to recruit uh, people for, for the position. And I want to be careful that we end up with the best possible slate of candidates, of people who are qualified and perhaps even overqualified for the position to do the absolute best job in our city we have had. Um, you know, we've set some very high standards in the past and I want that to continue. So, I think that there are people out there. So.
I mean, I see, I say we wait another two weeks to see if we get any replies from the other agencies.
Okay, we'll give them some time.
Mm-hmm.
If, if we get all of that response before next week, Monday, let's make sure that's on the agenda for further discussion and a possibility of choosing one. Uh, please get the email information out to all of us as soon as possible so that we can take a look at that. Um, what you sent from the GMP was excellent information to be able to peruse, so. Um, and we have all of that and we can look over that over the course of the next few days as we see that come in. That would be awesome. Okay, any further comments or questions on this particular item? All right, the next item, item B, um, city council staff retreat discussion. One of the things that came up during discussion and meetings this past week with staff members is staff would like to know the direction that council wants to head. We've got three new council members on council who staff wants to get to know, basically. And what's council's vision going forward? What, what, what are we seeing for the upcoming year? And that was proposed. Um, honestly, that was actually part of the discussion prior to last week, Monday, is, at the city hall. But, um, we needed to bring that forward. Are we willing to have a council retreat, say sometime in March, to where we can just kind of set some goals and long-range plans?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, um, then I will ask the clerk to send out a selection of dates and you'll pick the date that works the best for you. We'll see if we can combine that into something that works for everybody. And it will probably be on a Saturday. And we can take the entire day as necessary and meet and just do a, a goal-setting discussion. Come with your dreams and your ideas. Staff is gonna bring all sorts of suggestions. They, they really want to know what we have in mind. And, um, my experience with staff is that they really give us a lot of options. We've got, we've got a good bunch of people. So, further questions or comments on that?
This is not, I, an event, if I'm, if I'm correct, these folks will be paid to come on a Saturday.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes, this is outside of regular work.
Good. I just, I just want people to know that they'll get paid to come. Um, you know, there's all, we just want to make sure that people are gonna get paid.
Ms. Horner?
Uh, most likely unless you request staff outside of the leadership group. Um, most of our staff is exempt, so there wouldn't be additional pay because those extra hours are considered as part of their salary. Um, which is why they make the amount that they make. And so, um, there wouldn't be additional pay uh, for coming on, on a Saturday as an exempt employee who doesn't qualify for overtime. But that doesn't mean that we don't take time off in other times, and that's why the council in the personnel policy manual has provided that eighty hours of executive leave to compensate for those extras. to compensate for those extra hours. However, if we do bring in anyone that's a subject matter for anything that you request, that is a non-FLSA exempt employee, so somebody who does require overtime, they absolutely would receive overtime pay for working outside of the regular schedule.
Thank you.
All right, so then we'll ask the clerk to get those dates out to us, and I'm sure you'll start seeing things already tomorrow, so please respond to those. All right, so as I'm looking at my notes here, there is nothing to come before council, and other business come before council, and if there's no objection, I adjourn this meeting at seven fifty-six P M.